Is involved in policing and law enforcement, so actually physically putting that into physical practice.
And tell us how you became the squad leader?
I actually got, day one, I got thrown into it. We kinda went by height and I ended up in the very front and that's where I stayed for the rest of the remainder of the academy.
So when that happens, is it usually, is it practice that the entire class vote on it, say you continue on?
About halfway through.
As Chief said, if you're the first one to go through on a long time, it's an accomplishment we should all hear about.
Yeah, about halfway through, we, the squad leaders that were in that position at the time, we let the class vote on who should stay and who should take the role of somebody else if that were the case. And miraculously, I ended up staying where I was, so.
And also too, she's been a little, she's downplaying with the academy staff can boot a squad leader at any given time also.
That too.
Sure. Well, congratulations on that.
Thank you.
You have any questions for the board?
I don't.
Okay. Board members, any other questions? And I will look for a motion.
Move that the board of selectmen vote to appoint Reserve Police Officer Megan Wazinski of Littleton, Mass. to the position of Patrol Officer with the Littleton Police Department, subject to successful completion of medical testing.
Second. It's been moved to second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
All right. We also have some, another motion for Ashley's status in the police department. Ashley, come on up, come on up, say hello.
This is the great thing about this, while Ashley is moving down, we're not losing Ashley, she's gonna stay on, this is gonna free Ashley up to be able to be a little bit more selective, if you will, of, you know, she can kinda pick and choose around the family and things like that, to work both cruiser shifts, also, you know, details and other things for the department, she's still gonna be heavily involved in the RAD program and also Police Explorer, she's expressed an interest to stay involved in that today, you know, to agree that she can. And also, you know, has expressed an interest that hopefully in the future, once, you know, family situation, things like that may have changed, you know, if a position's open, she'll be in the same Reserve status to be able to come back, you know, to full-time.
Great, great. Board members, any comments for Ashley?
Should be an extensive interview, I should think. Good luck, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Melissa?
Same, I just think it's awesome, we have the flexibility to offer that.
Sure. You know, first time, Mom?
I am, yes.
Fantastic, it's a blast, having raised my three kids and, you know, making those choices are very difficult and I'm glad that the chief was able to, you know, in this town actually have the ability to let you make the decision to go to Reserve and we appreciate your service, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Look for a motion.
Move that the board of selectmen vote to appoint Ashley Brooks of Worcester, Mass. as a Reserve Police Officer.
Second. It's been moved to second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, Ashley, congratulations again.
Thank you.
I was, I was, I had custody of my three kids. So our next agenda item is a joint meeting with the air board of selectmen, who I'd like to ask to come on up, we have some chairs up for you, on the air road, Route 210 Willow Road, Brew Street intersection.
You can sit at the big table?
You can sit at it, we want you up front, absolutely. Good evening, good evening.
Hi.
So.
Was it on? What time did it work?
Yeah, it worked, it worked 15 minutes ago.
Yeah, well, function.
Yeah.
There we go.
It must've been automatic, shut off.
Power button. So before we get into the discussion, it's an informational meeting, I'd like to ask the air board, welcome, just to introduce yourselves so folks on TV can know exactly who you are.
Chris Solomon, Air Board Selectman.
Janice Livingston, Chairman of Air Board Selectman.
Really on TV?
Yes.
Look, you can see yourself.
I called that to missing the last move. Yeah, you look up.
Yeah, boy.
Robert Pombrian, Air Town Administrator.
So welcome.
We're not on delay like the Golden Globes were.
I'll be careful, be careful.
It's more fun when you're not.
Don't encourage him.
So both boards have been working diligently for the past three months in regards to the intersection at 2A110 and Brew Street. There's been some serious accidents there, the cooperation between the two towns have been fantastic and, you know, it's, we put a lot of work into this presentation and the ultimate goal is to have the state take care of this intersection and make that intersection a safer place for not only the communities of Aaron, Littleton, but also Groton, Harvard, and these surrounding towns. Chief King is gonna go through a presentation that we saw up in the air, so folks in town can see it. Chief?
Thank you. Welcome. Obviously, joint project between the towns of Littleton and Air for remediation of projects of the Littleton Air Road, Route 2A Willow Road and Brew Street intersections. This is a joint project between the two communities to solve a roadway issue that affects both communities. The intersection of Air Road and Willow Road and Brew Street has seen a steady increase in accidents and traffic over the last five years. Daily traffic affects both Aaron and Littleton residents on a daily basis in that area. The roadways in that area fall under Mass DOT, the Mass Department of Transportation jurisdiction. The front section of Willow Road and all of Air Road is under MassDOT's jurisdiction. Overview of the roadway, you can see Route 2A, which is Air Road, Willow Road and Brew Street. You can see it's in a congested area with, you have chip shots with 2A, because it's right on the 2A there, a house next door to chip shots that has two driveways out, the Sitco station which has driveways out, and also the truck parking across from the, from the Sitco station where we're running, there's some problems there with truck traffic blocking the roadway when they're blocking in and out of that parking lot. So you can see it's, you go down Air Road, it's actually 2A110 towards Air and it's not too bad, then you get in this one little half-mile section and everything, everything is popping out there. We did a, we had a traffic count done in the area through our town engineers, these are the numbers, Route 2A handles approximately 14,500 vehicles per day, the brunt of that is between 6:00 AM and about 6:00 PM at night. Willow Road handles 4,400 vehicles a day and Brew Street handles about 560 vehicles per day. A lot of the vehicles on Willow Road and also on Route 2A during that timeframe also to constitute large tractor trailer trucks. The access control is poorly defined with the intersection, was the areas we were talking about, the driveways, the parking lots and things of that nature. The skew angle of Willow Road and Brew Street, it's not a straight, you know, T-intersection by any means or, and there's poor line of sight coming up to the roadway intersections. The 85th percent of the speeds on Route 2A was clocked at 51 miles per hour, it's actually a 45 mile an hour zone, so traffic can get on people fairly quickly at those intersections, so we do need, you know, traffic controls and other things to bring those speeds down. High traffic volumes and speeds on Air Road, the gaps aren't sufficient, especially when people are making left-hand turn, turns out of Willow Road. And there has been a significant accident history, especially in the year 2015. You can see accidents themselves started at about five a year and have risen to 11 a year in 2015. They averaged off at about five personal injury accidents a year. We did have one fatal motor vehicle accident this Labor Day weekend, this past Labor Day weekend, and some of the, a lot of these accidents, when Chief Wazinski and I had talked about it, the accidents, there would've been more PI accidents there, but with the advent of better seatbelts use and better airbag development, some of the, a lot of the injuries have kept more minimal. In the area, this is just a list of commercial properties in Air that connect to Willow Road. There are 63 businesses and industries on Willow Road, Westford Road and MCO Way that are currently impacted by traffic conditions at the intersection. The intersection is used by commuters and workers traveling from Air, Groton, and communities to the north access, Route 2A110, and also that's a main route from outlying areas, like it says, from Shirley and our father that come down through Air, down through Littleton to get to the 495 and Route 2 corridor also, to get into our, to our major cities. There's 158 residential properties that are currently impacted by the traffic conditions at the intersection, they're pulling out on a daily basis onto Willow Road from Air and it's, you know, again, it's a threat to our citizens. A reconfiguration and signalization of this intersection will improve the traffic flow, traffic safety, facilitate commerce in all our communities in Air, Littleton, Groton and the region. This is just an original letter on the property at Pigree Hill Development and Air and back in 2009, the intersection was rated at an F back then from the state, the average delay of over 50 seconds, and it's grown exponentially since then. Just an aftermath of a serious motor vehicle accident that happened in the area there back in late October, early November. You can see it's a side impact crash with heavy, heavy damage to the vehicle, that's what we normally face there, we're either facing side impact crashes, rear ends and the occasional head-on, especially when people are making a left-hand turn coming from Air, trying to make it onto Willow Road and misjudge the traffic coming the other direction heading towards Air. There's a low sun coverage that was done with Chief Wazinski, Chairman Carr and myself in the area, so there has been some widespread coverage in all the newspapers. We had to do a warrant analysis and first we had to be educated on what a warrant analysis is, what it means to me and what it means to MassDOT are two completely different things. A warrant analysis is basically, they're looking at the intersection and they have certain basis of what would be needed to require or let them engineer a light for that, for that intersection. We, again, engaged our town's engineering firm for assistance in this, we found out that we have to meet one of nine warrants, we have to meet at least one. Three are based on vehicle volume thresholds, two are based on pedestrian volumes, and one is based on crash history. The remaining three are dependent on specific conditions, since it's being located along a corridor of coordinated traffic signals or being close to a proximity of railroad crossing, be similar to our great road now out by the point, would be considered a quarter, sorry, coordinated traffic signals. The railroad crossing on Willow Road is not close enough to actually be counted, even though it certainly is, we'll talk about it a little bit later, definitely impacts the intersection. MassDOT, again, expects that a minimum warrant, one, the eight-hour vehicle volume should be met, specific, especially for roadway that's under their jurisdiction. On our, in our case, warrant analysis were performed and four out of five warrants that would be applicable to us were met, as the next slide will show. The eight-hour vehicular volume, we met that criteria, the four-hour vehicular volume, we met that criteria, the peak hour, we met that criteria, we did not meet the pedestrian volume, and we did meet the crash experience. Something that wasn't measured and we don't know, because there are no crosswalks there, there actually is a large walking contingent that happens from the parking lot that's across, across from the Sitco station. And also in the summer months from approximately May until October, there's actually a fair amount of people that walk down out of the campground, both access the Sitco station and go down to access, to access chip shots. So while we did not make the warrant in that thing, there, there is a fair amount of traffic that, that walks down, there's actually some younger children that walk up, both from, there's a small trailer park, excuse me, a small trailer park, also from Willow Road and also from the Brew Street area, that walked out of the Sitco station because they have, you know, candy, soft drinks and, and other things, you know, and a, you know, a donut shop in there. These are just the sheets that we sent off to the state, these are what they, how the engineering firm builds their warrant analysis, that's the sheets for warrant number one, gives you your traffic counts on eastbound, westbound, and also, you know, on the Willow Road approaches. Same with warrant number two, again, that's the engineering firm, I don't necessarily understand all of it, you tried to have explain it to me, but basically, again, it's traffic count numbers. Warrant three, warrant four, even though, sorry, warrant five was the accident, even though it's not listed up there, we did a hand search of our accident reports, sent them to the engineering firm, they went over them because of an accident, even if it happens in the area, if a signal wouldn't have prevented it, it doesn't come. So if somebody slides on ice and hits a tree, there's no signal that's gonna stop that. So the accidents all in that area were counted, so we know we haven't had your count. What we're looking for, what I believe both boards are looking for, both communities, solid traffic signal, we were hoping at some point to provide the separate left turn lanes for each air road approach, provide a dedicated left turn lane and a shared through and right turn lane on Willow Road for approved operation and safety. Brew Street was basically stay the same way it is and implement some level of access control. What we're hoping is they'll narrow down somewhat or straighten out the intersection at Willow Road, because it widens out so much, that's part of the problem, is the stop sign is almost pushed out of your line of sight if you're going straight or taking a left, that stop sign's to the right. Most of the serious accidents have been people coming down Willow Road, running the stop sign, ending up in an intersection with tractor trailers or cars doing, you know, 45 miles an hour at least, and you can just see that's not a, it does not make for a good operation. Again, just a quick mock-up of lighting or something, just in that area. Next steps, Selectman Carr?
So we have met with, we went to Air's selectmen's meeting last Tuesday to inform the residents of Air. Since then, we were able to meet with our both legislative delegations from Littleton and Air, which consisted of three reps and one senator. We did that on Friday, there was some very good feedback from, from those folks, and what our hope is that that would be our last meeting. If they can take this ball and run with it and get it done, they saw the same presentation and they said this is a no-brainer, as we all did. So we're hoping that they're gonna take the ball, get the, the intersection looked at and get it redeveloped or reconfigured so that it's a safer intersection. If that doesn't happen, we have Plan B and that's to get Mass DOT, Department of Transportation, Executive Office of Public Safety and anybody else that will listen in a meeting so we can present this presentation to them also. Selectman Hill, I know you've been involved in it, do you have it in your head or?
Well, I think it's important to say that we're, we're trying to avoid the five-to-ten-year typical Mass DOT construction plan, and, and the delegation was very supportive of that as well. And, and from the feedback that Superintendent Clyde got and Mr. Wetzel, I think the state is starting to realize that there is a much bigger problem than they thought, so I think we're going in the right direction here.
Yeah, and I think, you know, during this process, when we started this, we had no contact with Mass DOT, and as we were meeting and getting all our documentation and all our data, DOT, Mass DOT reached out to both Air and Littleton, and I believe you too, right, Chief? So we presented them with the facts that we found, so hopefully it's, it's moving in the right direction.
And, and I'm sure the town administrators can talk about this, but the delegation's going to draft a letter, I believe, this week in unison to send off to the, to the state?
To send off to Mass DOT, sounded like it was gonna be addressed to the secretary or to the, to request a meeting for the legislators with, with the state administration to pursue this, but they were, I thought, very, extremely enthusiastic.
I agree.
From our, following the briefing that we gave them last Friday afternoon.
Robert, your name there?
Yeah, I would agree, Mr. Chairman, concur with my colleague, the delegation seemed very receptive and was gonna draft that letter signed by all four of them, and I know that Representative Harrington was also going to make a personal call to facilitate that meeting as well, so I was very encouraged.
Yeah, and I think not only, both boards should develop a letter, maybe Robert and Keith can work on getting a letter for our signature so we can send that off for our support also.
Yes.
I think that would be a good thing. Members, any questions?
Just one thing I want to point out, as it was approached during the week, someone took the, the comments that made that Willow Road will stay the same, and somehow they come up with the idea that it wasn't being included as part of the, probably the signalization, it's just it's not gonna have a separate lane go in that direction.
That happens over here in Littleton too?
Yeah.
I had two comments about that.
Very good and very encouraging to hear that the representatives and the senator will jointly offer a letter to the appropriate folks, that's an action plan and at least a first step out of this, so that's good.
Yep, excellent. Members, any?
No, I'm glad it's gotten as far as it has, since it hasn't gone anywhere.
Yeah.
You know, that was, that's a curious thing, because we had, someone over in Air asked, say the same thing, it was 15 years ago that this was brought forward when, was it, who or was your rep?
No, Senator Reason.
Senator Reason, there you go.
They, they got somebody to do a design, now is that design still out there?
Yeah, right.
Is it still good?
Yeah, yeah, it's still good, right. But supposedly a design was done, so I don't know where it is.
Well, I think we've got this big ball rolling, we'll just.
But anyway, it's going in the right direction.
Absolutely.
And I would say that if you took a traffic count from three years ago and compared it to now, it would be dramatically different with the growth of Air and Littleton in that area is dramatic, especially with the truck traffic. So, and we also, as I've stated before, get the truck traffic that now cuts through our residential areas, the town beach, which is another big concern for our departments. So there's many different moving parts here.
Right. Any, go ahead, Chief.
Mr. Selectman Vella had asked this question last time, and since that time, we've actually had other conversations with District 3, and it's on their, it's definitely on their radar screen now. I think the board meetings help, the press coverage helps, there was some prior contact made by some of the state officials, I believe, but District 3 has all the information, they were, according to Jim Clyde, one of the conversations he had, the people, they were very surprised at the counts, number one, and the, I talked to our District 3 rep and, you know, they actually had a separate meeting at District 3 already, just about this intersection alone, so they're well aware of it now and I think a little bit of pressure will just keep that ball moving forward now, because they even talked about, you know, if, you know, the counts really show up and getting at least initial signalization up there earlier than later, and then get the full engineering done after the set lights up there, even running and worrying about left turn lanes and right turn lanes afterwards to control that intersection. So I'm hoping, I'm hopeful that we get some action and then it just keeps moving.
Right, excellent. It's important to just keep the foot on the gas.
Absolutely, absolutely. Any comments from the audience? What I'd like to also recognize, you know, we, the, the police chief, fire chief from Air, police chief, fire chief from Littleton, the two highway superintendents, you know, it was just a great collaborative between both towns, and, you know, as board members, you should be proud of your folks, and I know our board members are proud of ours, how we just come together, we saw an issue and we really took it on, so it's, it's really good to see when two communities come together like this.
Yes, I want, I would like to concur, I think it's very important, first of all, we adore our fire chief and our police chief, and I also, again, say kudos to Selectman Hillman because he has been the driving force on the air side of this. But what's been very apparent is that teamwork, and that's what this is, this is teamwork. I don't know what happened years ago, but it's on our radar and I think that we're all gonna make sure it stays on our radar, but I think the teamwork is just absolutely awesome. So it's a real pleasure to be a part of this.
Fantastic, yeah, really is.
I've started this partially because I take my life on my own hands every single morning, as does Selectman Knox coming out of Brew Street, so we have a firsthand account of what it's like there, and it's, it's getting busier by the second. And then, as Chief King mentioned the other day, if we have a train delay too, you know, train stops, we can get 30 cars there lined up at 7:00 in the morning, that takes forever, and you know when car 15 has gotten so frustrated that they just.
Go.
Go, so, there's a lot of moving parts, like, like I said, but Janice put it, put it best, the work and collaboration has been great, this has moved really fast, which is unusual for government, so we may be making a trip to Boston, but.
Be worth it.
Yeah, I agree.
You're driving.
Yeah.
We got a cruiser or something, I'm sure we, because we're gonna wait for some type of, some type of ride.
With the new schedule, you can take commuter rail.
Yeah, that takes too long. That takes too long.
You had to throw in.
I like getting that cop cab better. All right, well, thank you very much. It's appreciated all the support.
The chief is, is gonna take the show on the road, I think, all the times he's made this presentation, so.
He's intelligent personality of that.
I'd much rather make this presentation than the presentations I had to make all weekend.
Sorry a few times this weekend, Chief. Thank you, folks.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for having us.
Nice to see you all.
Nice to meet you.
Yeah, thank you.
Nice to see you.
Get something to drink.
Very nice to meet you.
Tell us to see you, I'll talk to you soon.
Robert, always a pleasure, thank you.
See you, Robert.
Thanks.
Nice to see you all. Yeah, sure.
Thank you for having us.
Okay, thank you for having us. Nice to see you. Thank you.
Can we spell it out again?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on. 5, 5A. Oh, I'm sorry, yep, public input, I apologize, 7:15, a little ahead of schedule. We have public input and members' updates, any public input? Seeing none?
No, no, I think we have, yes.
I just wanted to open up the floodgates a little bit about what happened on Friday or Saturday morning.
Absolutely.
We had a incident down at Trump headquarters, unfortunately, with some graffiti and some other, other issues that occurred. The, obviously the department's working on it, Detective Pory, who was here tonight, is still going through surveillance tapes out of all the, you know, ones we've been able to pick up on at this point. You know, I would say to you, you know, I was quite upset, you know, when I saw, and when I saw how it defaced something in our town common, and the one thing I will tell you though, you know, from my standpoint, as I said, I'm a firm believer in free speech, but, you know, when you commit a criminal act, that's not free speech. But I will tell you, Littleton stood proud, Keith, Mr. Bergman and I were in there on Saturday and also heard from the people that were running the Trump facility, how many residents of Littleton, whether they be supporters of Mr. Trump or not, had stuck their head in and told them how disgusted they were that, you know, this happened, and, you know, I think, you know, that's, that's a key thing that just shows that, you know, I think Littleton is an accepting place, I think Littleton always has been, and I don't think, I haven't heard one, one person who I've talked to over this whole weekend until now that has said to me that, you know, whether they, I had one, one woman say to me, you know, I'm a, I'm a staunch Democrat, I'm not supporting that man at all, but what happened was disgusting and shouldn't be allowed, so, again, I just wanted to say that we're working it and I'll keep you apprised, but, you know, I think Littleton itself stood itself proud.
Mr. Vella, any comments on the events of this weekend, this past weekend?
Chief summed it up quite nicely, certainly disappointing, in all candor, not unanticipated in a way, Chief's been making preparations all along as to possible activities in the common, very small, very, very small activity Monday morning last week, Chief communicated well with the participants and it went off smoothly, people had an opportunity to express their displeasure with the presidential campaign of Mr. Trump. But the truly wonderful piece of all this is not the adversity, but the response to adversity, and that is, as the chief said, how people in town responded, whether for or against the candidate, it's, this is not the way we do business here in town, and that is a characteristic of our town. So we talk about character of town and sometimes talk about the farms and things like that, that's the real character of the folks in our town, is supportive. like that. That's the real character of the folks in our town, is supportive of free speech, of democracy, and an opportunity for everybody to have their say. So that's what made me most proud about this past weekend. Thank you.
Mr. Knox, can I comment? Just quickly, I would echo the same things, but I do want to mention, I thought that the chief did a fine job on the TV interviews in representing not only his force, but the entire town, and in yourself with the comments in the paper that you made, I think it was very representative of the town. And congratulations on being a selectman in Littleton, Colorado, and a, and a police chief in Colorado.
I was going to say, I was waiting for the police chief in Colorado to call me today and say, "Who are you? Would you like to take over my job?"
I suppose we should tell him. No, he's still working here.
Just to piggyback on it, if I may, it made the Montreal Canada press.
Oh, did it really, huh?
Why? Don't know, but I learned from Dean Carr about it this evening. I spoke to him at the headquarters on the phone, and he said, "Even in Montreal, international, well done."
That's the second international story within two weeks.
That's right.
The drum story, one international, so we're on a roll.
Your destination, Ty.
Selectman Hebert.
No, I think the board's already summed it up really well. You guys did an awesome job, and I agree with everything Selectman Avella said, so nothing to add.
And I don't have much to add either, just the fact that, you know, growing up in this town and living here all my life, we've seen spray paint on buildings as kids and down at the school and Shake Lane and all that. Nothing to the extent of what we saw up here, though. You know, when kids are kids, this crowd was a little bit older and knew what they were doing and knew what they wanted to say. And it's just, it's a shame for a historic building like that, not only to have that done to it, but, you know, that's a centerpiece of our town, and it has been since the early 1800s. So it's something that this town won't tolerate, and we shouldn't tolerate. And as Selectman Avella said, you know, it's good to see our community come together, whether you're Republican, Independent, Green Party, or even Democrat, come together and announce what happened. So, good job. Any other, any other updates?
Yes, even Democrats.
Excuse me?
There was no confession in there, was there?
No, 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 nothing at all, nothing at all, nothing at all.
General updates?
Yeah, member updates.
Super quick, you mentioned, thank you for the moment of silence, but just for the loss of Pete Tierney, who, as you mentioned, was a wonderful man that gave a lot to his community, and we're going to miss him dearly. So I just wanted to say that.
Mr. Knox? Same thoughts on Peter. We've all known him. He was there a long time, a great teacher. He taught in a unique way that kept everyone interested and smiling, and you were never bored going into his class, and the dedication he had for the town to come back and be on the Conservation Commission for all of us, yes.
And thank you. You folks had a lifetime experience, really, with Peter. I know much less than you all did, so I can only echo everything you said. Very, very good man. Anything, thanks for our town.
As a four-year member of the Audio-Visual Club run by Mr. Tierney, I was up close...
He used to be on class.
I didn't have to go to homeroom. I mean, it was fantastic. He was a great guy, and we had a blast. I mean, he made high school fun for anybody that had him as a teacher, so he'll be well missed. Okay, moving on. Elder and Human Affairs Council on Aging. We have some gifts that we have received from the Morrison Charitable Foundation and Minuteman Services.
And the Council on Aging has voted to accept, recommend that you accept both of the gifts for the purposes as intended in the motions. One's for transportation, and the other is for a dishwasher for the COA Kitchen Project.
Members' questions? Look for a motion.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Subsection 53A, to accept the following donations for deposit into special gifts for the purposes so indicated. One, $5,000 from the John and Eunice B. Morrison Charitable Foundation for the Transportation Program of the Department of Elder and Human Services. And two, $3,500 from Minuteman Senior Services for a dishwasher for the COA Kitchen Project.
Move and second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much for the Morrison and the Minuteman Services. We appreciate that.
I'll just ask.
Absolutely.
Chief, do we have any updates as to when the kitchen's ready?
I just asked that this week, actually. No, but I will get that.
Thank you.
All right, 5B. The Bicycle-Pedestrian Advisory Committee looks to reduce its membership from eight to seven.
This is another request that Elder and Human Services Director Pamela Campbell has brought to us. She supports this advisory committee. There are currently seven members on the committee. They have had some difficulty getting a quorum. With eight members, the quorum is five. With seven members, the quorum would be reduced to four. They've struggled with getting a quorum over the last several months. So you get, you set the, it's not a town meeting vote, this board created the committee, you set the membership, and so you can, you could reduce the membership to the current number of active members, which is seven.
This is not one of, this is not the first committee that's had this request. Any questions, members? I'll look for a motion.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to reduce from eight to seven the membership on the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee established on July 22, 2013, as requested by said committee.
Now, move and second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. 6A, FY 2017 Budget Planning. Budgeting below levy limit, operating budget update. So we'll start out by the budget update, and then, Mr. Avella, I know you'd like to have a conversation about the levy limit.
Thank you.
Yep.
Basically, what I've done is provided an update that gives you the level staffing budget version, which we had previously discussed. That budget version would be assumptions that I have in place. Has a surplus currently of $254,500. Again, level staffing, no increases to staffing or services. It includes any steps and colas that might be due. It also does have the assumption on a 4% increase for the school department or $690,000 to cover level staffing scenarios. We don't have the detailed school budget as of this date, but the chairman did indicate that I should have it this week, so I'll have more information at your next meeting. So again, this is just a draft at this point. In scenario B, what I did was put in the town-level staffing budget and the school-level services budget, which had a larger increase of $1,248,000, or 7.23%. That scenario would create a deficit of $303,450. And then the final version is the town mission budget, and again, the school-level service budget, which is the only number that I've received to date. At that level, the deficit would sit at $1,690,000, so that's a very large number. That would include town department budgets at the level that the department head or the appointing authority thinks is necessary to meet the needs of the community. So it does have about 15 additional staffing positions and other services. So based on the current projections with revenues, with new growth, with local receipts, the town has an additional $1,008 in available funding over 2016 levels, which is about a 4.16% increase. And these scenarios that you see above are based on that number being available. The prior, I'm sorry, the major driver of that $1,008 is new growth, and I'll go through the projections that we have in place for that, but there's a lot of residential and commercial developments on the pipeline. For discussion purposes, I know it was brought up about having a general discussion about budgeting below the levy for 2017. Once I have the detailed school budget so that I can figure out, you know, exactly what level staffing is and exactly where the scenario is right out, you know, I'd be happy to bring that forward again so that you can have a discussion on what that might look like. Typically, any remaining funds above, we haven't been in the situation where we have extra levy funds, but under the policy, typically those funds will be allocated into OPEV or other post-influent benefits obligations, as we have not yet reached our ARC or annual required contribution amount. Generally, the ARC sits somewhere north of $2.5 million. We're not, you know, putting that aside at any level at this point. I also just dropped in the statement on the tax levy usage from the town's adopted financial policies, which basically state that the needs of the town vary year to year. The revenue stream available to the town is also subject to fluctuations outside of control of the town, such as state aid and certain local miscellaneous receipts. So due to this uncertainty, the revenue stream that the town will minimize the amount of excess levy capacity in any given year until the following benchmarks are met. So the benchmarks are, all reserve levels outlined in this policy have been met, which we would meet in 2017, and that the three-year financial forecast taking into account excess levy amounts shows no structural deficits, which is also met, again, a first time, in if I'm using the level staffing scenario that I have in A, in the three different scenarios. And then, the town maintains funding of the OPEV and pension liabilities at the annual required contribution level or ARC, which is not met for 17. So again, that's why I stated normally it would go to meeting the ARC. Other budgetary issues, again, I mentioned that the school department budget has not been received yet, but I have been told that I should have that this week.
It's kind of important to the whole thing, since it's about 52% of the budget, you know?
It's a large part. Also, in that, school department budget will be detailed the use of their reserves or their school choice, circuit breaker funds. So we'll need to see those, that level of usage. I did provide the balances, as I did in the previous memos, ending 2015, and their proposed uses for this fiscal year. For revenue projections, we are looking at a 1% growth in local receipts beyond the normal levels. I have also incorporated the inclusion of the meals tax increase with the new restaurants coming online, and the hotel room tax. So if a hotel opens later, I'm going to need to, you know, tweak those projections. Also, we have a very high figure for new growth in fiscal 17 of $1,001. If some of the buildings or the housing developments that are being done now get delayed, or they come on faster, I'll need to modify this. We won't have this number nailed down until another few months into the process, so we will keep monitoring that.
Just one, just one comment on revenue, I guess, just for the state. I talked to Rep Osario today. The governor has signed off on some 9C cuts, which isn't going to impact local aid. And moving forward, I asked him about the FY 17 budget, and he told me that House Speaker DeLeo and Governor Baker have both said they're not going to raise taxes and/or fees, and that local aid won't be touched. So that was good news to hear today. It's early on in the process. House One hasn't even come out yet, but to hear that type of positive talk coming out of Boston is a good thing.
It is, it is. State aid has been relatively flat the last three years. What, sometimes we'll get like a $50,000 increase in one particular account or another, but it's typically been offset by an increase in assessments, which are directly counted against each other before being sent to the town. So actually, last year, we collected a little bit less than the year before with the increase in assessments, but any stabilization is appreciated. Also, in the five-year projections, what we're looking at in our spreadsheet calculations is a 3% growth in town department budgets, which is typically inclusive of the steps and colas that are due, zero increase in operating expenses in these scenarios. I've also programmed an average of 3.1% increase in school appropriations, starting in '18 through '21. It's 4% for fiscal '17. And an average of 11.78% increase in fringe or employee benefit costs, which primarily is health insurance. So under that scenario, the deficit appears in fiscal '20 and continues through '21 at just over $1 million. Again, the level staffing scenario. So anything above the level staffing scenario will push the deficits higher and earlier. And we also just need to continue, as we have been in the past, to be aware of future costs for dealing with changes for benefit-eligible positions. They affect OPEV, health insurance calculations going forward, and just continuing to monitor the, like, five-year agreements as we go forward.
Which we just signed off on, not three years, so we're good for three years anyway. No sound? Mr. Avella?
Thank you. I did want to have this discussion about perhaps fiscal year '17, that we not collect all the way to the levy that would be authorized on the Mass General Law with Prop 2 and 1/2. As we know, with Prop 2 and 1/2, there's three ways we can affect the levy. We could do an override, permanently raising the levy by the amount of that override; an underwrite, permanently decreasing the amount of the levy by that amount; or just not raising to the levy, and that becomes a decision inside of the town, in that, well, those funds not raised on any particular year remain available as far as a levy in future years going out. So it doesn't increase it by the override, it doesn't decrease by the underwrite, but it leaves funding available in those out years. It seems that we're probably the healthiest financially that we've been, at least in some recent memory. We've had some very good years previously, but with the new growth, there's been a substantial amount of it. Certainly, we could go out and spend it all, and we're brilliant enough to be able to do that. I know, we've done that previously. I'd like to see if we could be a little bit more brilliant in not spending it all this time around, give some consideration. Bonnie's mentioned the level of staffing, and that's what I've used notionally as a point of departure, is that surplus of roughly $254,000. There's nothing right or wrong about that particular number. As I say, it's a point of departure to use in our discussions as I introduce this. And the reason I take that is, we, as a board, have very much pushed that level staffing as a goal year after year after year, and we've asked our departments to work hard to achieve that, understanding that things come up, so to speak. There are changes in circumstances that require other thought. It's not just, not all the times, and we're going to take one approach, and that's it. Bonnie mentioned policy, and policy's very important because it helps us give us, again, that basis of departure. We've planned, we've thought through some things, we have alternatives that are made available to us, and now how do we choose to use those alternatives that are available to us? As we know, we do a budget in May for town meeting. What's passed there is the amount of money that ultimately is going to be raised and appropriated through various sources, whether it's federal funds, state funds, grants, primarily property taxes for a town of our own setup. And it's very much predominantly property taxes that pay our bills. So anything we're able to do there is very much a direct benefit to the residents and the taxpayers of the town. And that's what I like to do. We're not lowering taxes. I want to make sure there's no illusion that I'm advocating that, because that's just not going to happen. But it is an opportunity to retard the growth of taxes. Bonnie did some very back-of-the-envelope, I call it that, calculations, and on the average home, $50 a year is what we're talking about. So we can make the argument, $50 is not a lot of money, one way or the other. It's still $50, and it shows a commitment by this board also, I believe, and to the town, that we are interested in being good stewards of the resources they provide us. They're harder earned dollars through the tax system. And I'd like to plant that seed, so to speak, amongst us, and I mentioned a couple other times, but now we've got a few more figures. And when we look at new growth in the out years, so Bonnie mentioned a little over $1.1 million next year, a little less than $700,000 in '18, and about $565,000 in '19, and these are planning purposes for the moment, $300,000 in years '20, '21. That's a big difference from this $1.1 this year. Was it $1.1 in '17 and $1.8 here in '16?
Uh, $1.2.
Excuse me, $1.2, and if by '16. So we see that curve does this and then drops down. If we are ever to have an opportunity to practice some of what we preach in trying to keep taxes as close as possible by providing services across the board to the residents of the town, this seems a good year, coming up into FY 17, to at least take a bit of chisel to that stone and try and knock the chip off, so to speak. So hopefully, I hope for your other thoughts, and certainly any inquisition you choose to put me under.
Well, I think, I think, you know, you're on the right path. I think that with, you know, projections, and these are preliminary numbers, I mean, we've got to just make sure everybody's aware of that, but to have those type of discussions, to bring in the finance committee, to bring in the school committee, to hear those concerns, and I think as a town and as a Board of Selectmen, as the CEOs of this town, we should be doing, looking outside the box, so to speak, to do what we can do for the residents of town. So I'm all for it, you know? I'm all for it to, let's start the discussions, and, you know, as you said, that drop off is quick and fast, and we have an opportunity to at least start the foundation of something that may be doable in the future, too. Joe? Paul said it well when he said that the seed's been planted, so we now have a chance to, just like you say... looking outside the box, so to speak, to do what we can do for the residents of town. So I'm all for it, you know? I'm all for it to let's start the discussions. And, you know, as you said, that drop off is quick and fast, and we have an opportunity to at least start the foundation of something that may be doable in the future, too. Joe?
Paul said it well when he said that the seed's been planted. So we now have a chance to, just like you say, go out and involve the rest of the boards, committees, and the public on this, to bring it up as a talking point, to make sure that everyone sees it the same way and if we can go forward. I think, once again, if you are ever going to do it, it looks like it could be done now. I personally just want to make sure that when the figures come in, that it doesn't affect anything or put us behind in future years, so we're catching up things. I don't want to have that happen, that all of a sudden, you know, because of what we did here, we can't do that. So we'll wait for those figures that come in. Joe?
I literally agree with everything Joe just said. I totally agree. I think it's a great path to go down. Just, you know, I notice things like if we eliminate something, it likely becomes more expensive later down the line, so we've just got to kind of weigh all those pieces and see how it might work.
Yeah. And I think, you know, to Paul's point, the communication and the planting of the seed is, it's, the communication between school committee, finance committee, board of selectmen has been really, really outstanding the past three, four fiscal years here. And we strive to continue that, so, you know, I think just the fact that we're talking about something like this, it's going to get out there and focus on those committees and we'll start talking about it. We need to engage them.
And by choosing this methodology, we were to make reduced levy amount, is it remains available in the out years? So after, or during FY17, we say, nah, that really was a mistake, and we need to get a bit more revenue and collect more revenue through taxes. The levy is there for us, so we have not diminished that capability.
Right.
Did I say that correctly, Bonnie?
Correct.
Thank you.
And it's consistent with the written policy, too, because it does, the financial policy says one of the things that you can do if you have a surplus is that you're not spending.
Any other comments? All right, thank you, Bonnie. Thank you, Paul. Moving on, again, fiscal year 2017, budget planning, capital improvements, plan update. I see you've started your wish list.
Yes. This is my first pass at drafting a capital plan for fiscal 2017. This is my draft. This is just the first pass, so anything that you want moved in, pushed out, changed, feel free, I'm not going to take it personally. But it's helpful to get something before you to start discussing. Basically, for fiscal 2017, we've had just over 3.7 million in requests for capital. And last fiscal year, or this fiscal year, the town appropriated 2.1 million in capital over one-time expenditures inside the levy limit. We haven't done any capital exclusions since 2009. We've managed to work this amount inside the levy limit. So of the 3.74 in requests, the information that I'm going to present can support spending in the amount of 2.6 million, which would, you know, in theory, if all of the requests were validated and vetted, would it have a deficit of just over a million dollars on the requests? Any debt authorized for any projects would be paid in future fiscal years, so we've changed the amount available for capital based on our debt service obligations. Basically, what we have available for fiscal 2017 is just over a million one in undesignated fund balance funding, 200,000 in savings from short-term debt reserved but not required for our roadway program. We place some of the debt a little later so that the interest isn't going to hit until the following fiscal year, so I have a little bit of a surplus there. It's one-time, it's not sustainable, but it would be appropriate for capital usage. In this spending plan, there's 114,000 proposed from other funding, which would include LCTV revenues, PEG access revenues, and Clean Lake funding. And just over a million two that is inside the levy, which includes accumulated long-term debt service reductions. So as we pay down our debt, that money does not flow into the operating budget, we keep it and use it for capital or future debt. So we need to start prioritizing and deciding which projects are going to be funded prior to the March 2016 close of the warrant. We need to identify which projects might be eligible for community preservation act funding, which are going to be paid cash, and what are going to be borrowed, and what's not going to be funded. As we did last year, we did identify projects that could be funded in fall, should we have remaining snow and ice funds, so I've prepared a draft for that also. Last year, we didn't really have any snow and ice funds remaining, but we keep our fingers crossed.
You went behind.
And, let's see, and the finance committee has received a copy of this, but they have not deliberated any of this yet, they're the first on board to discuss. Items in the capital request that might qualify for community preservation act funding, 300 King Street, there was 17,000 to be expended by the Recreation Commission and PMBC for fencing around the 300 King Street facility, that may or may not qualify for CPC funding. Historic Resources Survey, 10,000 to be expended by the Historical Commission for the completion of a historic resource survey. They had started this several years ago, but it does need to be completed. And then Alumni Field. There is a request in to address Alumni Field. The dollar amount is unknown at this point. I know that the feasibility review is being conducted now. So this will warrant some further discussion with the Recreation Commission, PMBC, the School Department, and the Board of Selectmen, to see, some of the funding may be applicable for CPC funds and some may not, depending on what type of facility is proposed. So if the board deems that these projects are a priority, we can move them forward with the Community Preservation Committee application process. The next big item is the fire station design. There's 530,000. The item's targeted for debt exclusion ballot. So the design funds of 530 would be appropriated this May, followed in the next year, May of 2017, by an approximate $7 million construction cost appropriation. Vote of the Finance Committee recommended that this would be approved or authorized as a debt exclusion in accordance with the financial policies back on March of 2014. As has been the practice for the last several large projects, to include the middle school, the police station, Russell Street School, the track, and wastewater facilities. Voting it as a debt exclusion doesn't preclude it from being funded inside the levy, which we did with the track, the wastewater system, and some of the Russell Street School debt. So just because we voted outside doesn't mean we can't fund it inside. I have planned in this draft that that 530 be funded inside the levy, even though the ballot vote will be secured in the assumption. So the total spending draft here is 2.6 million. I'll go through just each of the departments to review them. The Police Department is 162,330. It involves vehicle replacements to patrol vehicles, 106,000. Public safety radio maintenance at 12,000. This is a maintenance policy that covers about a million dollars in infrastructure, and just one problem can pay for itself. Police vehicle maintenance, 6,500 for tire replacement and other vehicle maintenance, but it's primarily tire replacement. And a plow truck at 37,690 to replace a 15-year-old Chevrolet with plow that they use to keep their facility open, providing some move at highway. Fire Department, 362,000. Major equipment and repair at 15,000. This is to use for the major apparatus. Protective clothing replacement at 12,000. This is the third year of an annual replacement program for the turnout care. Engine through replacement at 35,000 to replace a 94 brush truck with a surplus military vehicle that would be retrofitted with whatever equipment is necessary. And the SCBA or self-contained breathing apparatus replacement at 300,000 to replace some 10-plus-year-old equipment. Grant funding is being sought for this. We're hopeful that FEMA would award the town the grant, and if so, then our obligation would be limited to 15,000. So if that happened, it would free up the remaining 285 for other uses within the plane, but.
Has that grant gone in?
Being submitted tomorrow, due on Friday.
Highway, 261,675. Major equipment repair, 18,000 for their major apparatus.
Excuse me, that was MEMA? Is that what, the grant goes into MEMA?
FEMA.
FEMA? Oh, so it's the feds, huh?
A long-distance call.
Yeah.
Sidewalk plow, 158,000 to replace a 2002 sidewalk plow. Bobcat skid steer motor, 60,000 to replace a 1999 piece of equipment. 6,500 for a trailer refurbishment. It's an equipment trailer that needs to be refurbished. And 19,000 for a forklift. It's a refurbished forklift, it's not a new one, would be in addition to the fleet. School Department, 295,000.
Just one question, Jim, on the trailer refurbishment? I mean, 6,500, is it, can you get a new trailer? What trailer is it? I mean.
It's a, this is a 10-ton equipment trailer that we have.
Oh, okay. Okay.
The School Department, 295,000. The lease payment of 35,000 for the third year of a three-year lease for MacBook Air equipment. Card access system at the high school for 55,000, so it's a security card access.
I thought we did that. Why does that sound familiar to me?
Which one, Jim?
The high school card access.
It was requested last year but not funded.
Okay.
It was on the list last year, so that might be why. Card access system for Shaker Lane at 30,000. High school locker replacements, 20,000 to install new lockers in the boys' locker room. 40,000 for MacBook Air replacements, replacements and additions to equipment. School technology equipment replacement, 25,000 to replace miscellaneous technology equipment and Chromebooks as needed. Resource materials at 50,000 for school resource materials, textbooks, and training associated with it. And 40,000 for the high school key room to increase the capacity from 40 to 70 with chairs and necessary equipment. Next department is cemetery. This number might change by a few thousand dollars. Craig was getting accurate quotes, so it might be up to 73, but we're trying to get the.
Jim, didn't you just buy a backhoe?
Did we?
Yeah. How much did you pay?
138,000.
This is trading the existing piece towards this one.
Okay.
They're buying a lot smaller machine.
Okay.
So they're replacing a 1996 John Deere backhoe. And library is a small item. They did not get funded for furnishings last year. They haven't in the past probably five years, but they're looking for 5,000 to replace worn and damaged furnishings in their facility. Recreation is the small amount of 3,410 to upgrade their computer registration system, which handles all of their participants. It needs to be compliant with the new banking requirements and regulations, and it is not at this point, so it's to be upgraded. And then the major category, facilities and infrastructure. So there's a million 478 proposed here. The first are PMBC facility study recommendations. PMBC has identified 734,500 in items within the facility study. They are preparing an update for the board. I did actually leave them today, so they'll come forward with.
Steve? Steve was.
Yeah, Steve Moore had, he circulated a list earlier today.
I saw that today. I was part of that, we were part of that original meeting, I think.
Yeah, it is in your budget books, if you have the list, but they're going to prepare a presentation.
PMBC or the committee?
PMBC.
Okay.
And, let's see, recreation, major equipment and repairs. This is the second year that this article would be in. We did this fiscal year also for repairs and equipment to their major facilities and maintenance, so it would cover anything at the beach, at Bay Park, at 300 King, whatever the facilities might be. This item, Alumni Field Maintenance and Repairs, as part of their request to address Alumni Fields, Recreation did say that maintenance of Alumni Field to deal with those needs should be incorporated somehow. This is just a number that I literally picked out of the air, to just keep it in the radar in the scheme of things. So that being said, it is specific to address the needs of Alumni Field. I know that there were a lot of discussions that happened early in the fiscal year about slope and the rocks and whatever. Fire Station Design, 530, again, to be expended by PMBC for the development of design documents and bid services for the fire station expansion. This cemetery HVAC system, I was too aggressive in my typing. This is last year's item. It's not in these calculations. I apologize. I caught it Saturday when I was reviewing. So this was already taken care of. I think when I was just going through my spreadsheet, I slipped over a column.
Brilliant, you saved us 25,000.
Just kidding. Fire Station Community Room, 14,000 for the first year of four-year plan to be expended by the Cable Commission and PMBC to address the community room that's being proposed for the fire station. And it would outfit it with the broadcast media equipment, and it would be funded by the PEG access fees. The last one here is a stormwater MS4 permit needs. Tentative documents have been presented showing that the first year needs might be in the neighborhood of $140,000. So we're, with the Clean Lakes support, they earmarked 100,000 out of their Clean Lakes account and 40,000 from the general fund to earmark that. And that's much appreciated by, they were very.
Couple of things going on there. First, that there is a balance of $450,000 in self-tar funds that have been accumulated and have not been expended for Clean Lakes projects. And the, in discussions with the Light and Water Department that staffs Clean Lakes, we talked about looking at, is there a funding source that does not involve fees initially, does not involve raising property taxes to be able to address some of our stormwater costs that will come with the new EPA permitting? So Corey Godfrey from the Water Department who staffs Clean Lakes, I attended the meeting on Wednesday night, Bonnie attended on Thursday night, and Corey worked with his board, his Clean Lakes Committee, and they committed, and they are recommending that $300,000 be set aside over the next three years, $100,000 per year, to help offset some of those costs. So that's good to know. We're commissioning, we've got, we're commissioning some engineering work, or recommendation of an action plan to bring forward to a joint meeting of this board and the Light and Water Commissioners, probably by early February.
I thought the state was doing something with that, too, the stormwater? Is that, that hasn't come?
No, what the state's doing, well, state, what the state is or isn't doing is, the state has not made a determination to be the permittee. Mass Municipal Association has formed a task force to study and to recommend that the state agree to be the permittee, the single permittee for all of Massachusetts, which would mean that dozens or hundreds of our cities and towns wouldn't each have to have their own permit from EPA. That's the standard in almost all of the other states. That hasn't happened here yet. We're told that the EPA's MS4 stormwater permit, sorry for the abbreviations, that that will be out sometime soon. And so we're working with an engineering consultant that the town of Westford has used to give us sort of a quick and not dirty, no, cleaned-up action plan and recommendations on what, how we can best address what our, what we need to do to be compliant with that permit. So it's very helpful that if we could tap into a revenue source that would not involve right off the bat assessing fees or raising taxes, which is what the other communities are finding they have to do. So we'll have more about that in, I think, about three weeks' time.
This engineering analysis identify problem areas, and new regulations will, are there any of those problems?
Not on the ground, but it's, the analysis will look at systems that, it's not, it's not a, it's not looking at the, where there are drainage issues on the ground. It's looking at what are the systems that the municipality has in place to comply with the permit?
So we have a solution in hand that we'll be paying for shortly, and not have identified the problem in the town of Littleton?
We have.
An interpretation.
Well, the problem will come. The problem is that we have to have a monitoring system in place. That is the problem. And then the next problem is that we will be held accountable for the water quality results that that monitoring system produces. That was the hook that the Clean Lakes Committee understood, that they are all about. That was the hook that the Clean Lakes Committee understood, that they are all about water quality. And if the purpose of the federal, uh, permit, where, whether it's issued federally or at the state level, if it's the, the Clean Water Act and the standards of, that, that come from that, it will be ensuring that we're doing the mon, that, that the monitoring is being done is first and foremost what.
Now, I'm getting all that.
That's something.
Actually, I understand that very, very well. What I don't know at this point is that the problem that's been identified, that these new regulations will fix.
I think.
We will favor Clean Lakes.
Yeah, I think the regulations are di, frankly, have not to be, you know, I think the, the regulations are designed to find problems. They're not, initially, they're not necessarily designed to fix.
Fair enough, that's a good point. Thank you.
And the last item is, uh, to fund capital stabilization at the minimum amount of one percent of the total capital planning expenses. This amount can be raised, it's, it's getting a minimum amount and funding to the capital stabilization. So while we haven't received the formal request, um, you know, Keith just addressed the Clean Lakes Committee's intent to support, um, stormwater, um, expenses, but they've also voted to request that town meeting appropriate sixty thousand from the, um, cell tower funds to carry the Mill Pond Restoration Project to the next step. And they'll be coming forward to the Board of Selectmen with, uh, advising.
They'll be coming a lot sooner than we thought. I, the, uh, meeting I attended last week, um, I, I've gotta say, I've, I've been here, this is my ninth year now, and I've not had a briefing on the Mill Pond Restoration Project. It involves the Army Corps of Engineers. It involves some, uh, commitment of federal funds over the years. There was, I guess, a, a time when the project, the entire project could have been done by federal funds, but that was in the past. At this point, the, uh, the dredging project for Mill Pond would qualify for sixty-five percent federal funding. Thirty-five percent would have to be covered locally. The, uh, prod, the total project cost is, is up to three million dollars. And so you're talking about maybe a upset limit of one, of one million, which could be borrowed and paid off over a fifteen-year period. What the, the rep representative from the Army Corps of Engineers told the Clean Lakes Committee for the first time last week at their meeting was that in order to preserve the ability to get federal funding at a sixty-five, thirty-five percent level, the Army Corps is going to require that the town, and the town doesn't mean the Clean Lakes Committee, it's gonna mean the Board of Selectmen, so they've asked to be on your next agenda, would need to agree to a letter of intent to the Army, to the Army Corps to carry the project forward to the next level. The next level is this sixty thousand dollars that's being requested of town meeting. And Corey Godfrey from Water will have, I think he'll have the materials for us in the next day or two. He's, he's working hard on it now, and we'll get that to you in advance to look at. But Clean Lakes needs to, uh, come here and meet with the board and to ask you for a letter of intent. I gotta say, it's brand-new information from the Army Corps. They've never set deadlines before, but what they're telling us now is if the, if they don't get a letter of intent that a project is to continue, then it will fall off their funding. So that's worth a, that is worth a discussion. We've gotta have a discussion. Corey's putting the information together. And we'll, um, but the hope is to at least be able to carry it forward to let the town meeting voters decide. The letter of intent will be necessary even to preserve the ability of town meeting to take up the question of whether they wanna do it or not. The message we've sent to Clean Lakes is by the time we get to town meeting, we're not gonna be talking just about a sixty thousand dollar tied, you know, tied-me-over funding. We'll, we'll be talking about the, the, the project, which could be, you know, two and a half to three million dollars. And those are the, and so they would need to be prepared to justify that request. So just, that's on our, officially on our radar screen now.
Yes. In our package preparation for that meeting, do we have the Army Corps' letter outlining their request? So it's not just a briefing that evening, it's first we're learning some of the details. Those are federal dollars, um, different type buckets of money, because they send you the term, the term color money. Have different expiration years and different expiration, uh, periods. So it'd be useful to know what the Army Corps is using, and not that we're gonna second-guess their ability to understand the federal system. Because none of us do.
Yeah.
But sincerely to know what their assumptions are.
We'll see what information they have from them, and also we've asked them to, to give us the draft of what do they need to hear from us in order to preserve our place in line.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It'd be good, too, just to get a, a background on that, that whole topic anyway, 'cause at one point, I thought the holdup was that certain people owned the center of the lake, and they hadn't given it up, and that's why, why the stall came in, and so those, they can fill us in with all.
Yeah, and they, they talked about a lot of those issues. The fact is that the town would have to control the, they would have to own the entire area of the, uh, whatever the scope of work is. This is a significant portion that's owned by the town. They would accept a permanent deed restriction or, or, yeah, uh, a permanent easement, rather, from the Littleton Conservation Trust, which owns adjacent, some of the adjacent property. They would not accept a, uh, an easement from any other private property owner because the, the, the whole idea, the, uh, putting the federal funds towards the dredging project is that it needs to not be developed, that the, the area not, needs not to be developed at future time. The deed, the conservation property certainly won't be, 'cause it's, it's deed restricted accordingly, but if this private property that's held, uh, it would, in order for it to be included in the, the project area, the, the fee simple would have to be, um, I dare I say donated, uh, by the property owner to the town. Or at least acquired.
And then I just identified a couple of projects for potential, all special town meeting funding, if we had additional funds, um, remaining from snow and ice funds. These are just items that, um, they're unknown amounts today, um, stormwater permits, um, and alumni fields, and then, um, funding stabilization accounts to plan for in next fiscal year. But, you know, if, if there are other priorities at the board, we want to target them.
This is a fluid document. Usually gets wrapped up, um, then, then.
Has to be wrapped up by March.
By March, yeah, so end of the February, somewhere around there.
Is the department's gonna come in front of us for each of these, or is it all gonna go through Bonnie?
Um, they did present their capital requests when they had their hearing, so if, if there were more questions, we could.
Yeah, we've also, in the last few years, have scheduled some of the larger departments to come in and, uh, on a separate night and to come in with each of those.
The school gave theirs, what, last month when they were here? It was in their bunch of, in their, some of the capital items?
It was, yeah, their capital items were in.
Oh. All right, thank you, Bonnie. Moving on, seven eight, Green Communities Program, Littleton's designation, year-one grant submission, a hundred-and-forty thousand eight seventy.
Two things on this item. First is congratulations to Littleton on achieving, uh, green community status. We've been working on it since, uh, in one way or another, since the bill was signed in two thousand eight. It's been a, um, a lot of fits and starts that, since then, including, um, uh, having the Department of Energy Resources have to adopt a rule that addresses our circumstance, where we have a municipally-owned utility, which, uh, and we, and in order to qualify under the, um, the, the way the, the law was originally written, our light commissioners would have had to have adopted a renewal of the energy surcharge, where, where our ratepayers would have paid money into the state without any guarantee of how much money would come back. They didn't do that. There, there are forty-some municipal light plant communities, only four of them ever did that. And thanks to the great assistance of our, uh, Electric Light Department, we found three investor-owned utility customers, which was enough to pre-qualify us for this, and there's been an awful lot of work put in up till now. So, uh, it's great to, to, to have the designation. The next step, the very next step, is to submit a grant application, which is due a week from Friday. We, our application had earmarked a hundred-and-forty thousand dollars, uh, with thirty-four thousand going to schools, forty-one thousand for water, sixty-two thousand for str, LED streetlights. The, um, grant amount is a little higher than that, it is eight-hundred-and-seventy dollars higher. We're reviewing with each of the departments, uh, that they're still okay with the projects, the energy projects that, that were in the draft plan, uh, and with their input, we'll be submitting a, a draft app, uh, we will be submitting the grant application, uh, on time in order to get the, the money. But we do need an authorizing vote to, to do that.
Board members, questions?
Keith, this has given us a lot of background previously, so thank you.
We get signs, too. We get to put up some signs to show off that we're certified, right?
It's very viable.
Do we know where those might go?
Like, we don't, yeah. And I don't think, and I don't think they'll be illuminated either, but we'll put on, you know, we each get four, we get four of those signs, and we will.
Strategically placed throughout the town.
Yes, yeah.
You could make it sandwichboard-style, and Keith could parade around town.
Yeah, well, that wouldn't be a bad idea either.
That would be very energy-conscious.
Yes, yes. By one of the previous. All right, any other comments? Look for a motion.
Under the Board of Selectmen vote to authorize submission to the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources, D O E R of the Town of Littleton's Green Communities Year-One Grant Application for Energy Reduction Projects totaling a hundred-and-forty thousand eight-hundred-and-seventy dollars, including thirty-four thousand ten dollars for schools, forty-one thousand seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars for water, sixty-two thousand seven-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars for LED streetlights, fifteen hundred eleven dollars for other town projects, and eight-hundred-and-seventy dollars as a contingency.
Moving second, is all those in favor?
Hi.
Nice job, everyone. Everybody that participated in that, uh, the committees, the Sustainability Committee, and all those other committees that we have, um, and that are actually built on resident volunteers, so thank you.
And thank you, Keith, for your leadership.
Thank you.
Yes, Keith. MBTA Commute Rail Update, Littleton Station Parking Added, Fitchburg Line Schedule Changes. I had an opportunity to thank Mr. Eldridge for his support in this, uh, schedule on Friday.
You're wicked.
Mr. Bergman?
Yes, um, could, I, I just had a couple of things. Could, could you turn, for some reason, it has an automatic off switch, but I just have a few, few graphics to put up, that we're very pleased that the MBTA was able to add twenty-four additional parking spaces at, um, the, on Grimes Lane, on, on property that, uh, is known colloquially as where the free parking used to be, uh, before they built the new station, uh, shown, as shown here. So there are twenty-four additional spaces, um, across from the two-hundred, um, uh, spaces in, in the parking lot. That just, that's a good first step, but since there are at least, on an average morning, there are fifty-five, or my count, fifty-five, usually it could be higher than that, there, so it's more than double, uh, that, what we get, um, from, uh, these additional twenty-four spaces, we still have more than double of that, uh, that are in overflow parking, uh, and we're sure that there are many more cars that aren't there, because there's no place to park, and that they've gone on to park somewhere else. So we're gonna continue to work to identify additional, um, parking for the MBTA station. That is, by the way, an ask that, that, uh, I think we can assign that, that project to Senator Eldridge, um, and I know that he has discussed it with the MBTA folks over, uh, over the years, but we can continue to keep an eye on the neighboring properties, if there are any opportunities to, uh, to, uh, obtain property on, on which additional parking might be built. Maybe that is property that could be developed by the MBTA, perhaps with a, a Mass Works grant, uh, so we'll continue to, uh, to look at that. But it was a welcome first step, and Selectmen, Vella and I had toured the facility over a year ago, it was November, November of twenty-fourteen, um, thank you, um, that we had met with the MBTA real estate people. And, um, the last winter intervened, but when they cleaned off the snow, they got back to work and, and identified these spaces, so we're pleased to see that.
And there's still overflow?
And there's still overflow. There's still overflow. So we've got a lot more work to do to find more parking. The other update.
Stay different from.
Yeah.
Uh, Chief, will we need any kind of signage there to help folks?
Um, no, not this time.
They found, they found it, yeah. The T took about two weeks to get signs up. The, the spaces were ready before Christmas, they got them up after New Year's, but.
Something, you know, Jim's already posted the Foster Street, you know, 'cause we're worried about snow and things like that once that started up. This has alleviated a little bit of this, um, it's still, uh, you know, there's a lot of people that wanna use that site, especially with the, uh, the new train schedule, so, uh, you know, certainly, I think it's still something we have to keep pressure on to try and get it all locked.
Will the MBTA police go out there and do tickets, or who does the ticketing?
No, it's a private company.
Is it a parking company?
Yeah, the parking company that works for them. We actually will go, and we have, we, uh, ticket in that lot also, uh, especially when they're in fire zones and things like that, because there have been times when, if anything happened in the lot, you couldn't get a fire truck through at all. And that's very problematic, obviously, for obvious reasons. If they can't get down near the tracks, or if they can't, if there's a car fire, they're gonna lose the whole row, because they're gonna be humping for a hundred yards. So, uh, we've been assisting down there with the MBTA, uh, and, uh, you know, it's just, uh, you know, with the new, with the new station and the new lots, it, it, it certainly shows that, uh, there is a need out there for, for, you know, commuter parking. You know, and we're, I guess, in one of the better positions, if you will. There is some other lands around the, the, you know, the station where, like, Acton, West Acton, you know, there's nothing, there's nothing close by again. And even Air's solution, if you look at it, is gonna be very, uh, small, because if they stay in their, uh, their common area, there's, you know, the center, there's, there's a lot of property there to do anything with.
So, uh, the other thing to report on with the MBTA is that, uh, they, uh, they have launched their, uh, their next phase of changes to the commuter rail schedule, that the, uh, the new draft schedule was relief, released last week. I think, I'd have to say that it generally hasn't been a much more favorable reaction than the schedule they issued before Thanksgiving, which we like so much, but which didn't go along, which didn't get on so well from, from Concord and Lincoln, Lincoln and further end. So, uh, the, I had a presentation from the MBTA that was given at the Magic, uh, Subregion Meeting last week, and, uh, I'm just gonna, uh, go through a few, a few of the items here real quick, that it's the first comprehensive review of the commuter rail schedule, schedule that's been done since the Eisenhower Administration. And some of the things that they were trying to do were something as, as simple as to see if the sched, if the schedule was, as it was printed, was even doable, if it was even, um, rooted in reality. And when you have a turnaround time that is of three minutes, uh, when it requires fifteen minutes to, to, to move, move the equipment around at the, at the end of the line, then you know you're gonna get off schedule. In, in some cases, there was no allotment at all for how long it would take you to come to a stop and then start up, the, the, so the stop time that was budgeted was zero. And so, again, you're gonna miss it. One of the other things they, that the T did was to look at the problem of what's called cascading, um, delays, um, which is what happens when, if there's a, the other, for, for example, last week, the derailment in Andover, it's not on the Fitchburg Line, but that derailment caused delays in Fitchburg, because the train that was on, that was going to Andover would have gone back to North Station and then gone out to Fitchburg. So they're looking to reduce the amount of inter-line transfer equipment, just to have a, a better handle on it. They're creating a standard, standardized fifteen-minute, uh, time for a turnaround. And, uh, there's additional, uh, overall, there's increased peak train service, uh, and, uh, and it, uh, uniform, uh, definition of when the peak times are, six to ten arrivals in Boston in the morning, and three-thirty to seven departures from Boston in the afternoon. One of the things that greatly benefited Littleton and the Fitchburg Line, and we saw this in the schedule that came out, the so-called winter schedule that came out, uh, in early January. The Secretary of Transportation, and I heard this from. The Secretary of Transportation, and I heard this from multiple sources, the Secretary of Transportation personally ordered an additional early run to reach Littleton. She has said, Secretary Pollock had said it in numerous meetings, and I've heard her say it many times, and her staff heard her say it, too, so that when the schedule came out, before they did anything else, I had a deputy that said, she said, she told us, before we did anything else, we were to give Littleton its first early run. So, so really appreciate that, that kind of attention that we got from this. The number of trains that will come to Littleton with the new schedule is the same. We get seven now with the winters, with the just-released winter schedule. So at AM peak, during the AM peak period, we will have seven trains continuing from, that come out from Boston to, rather, that go in from Littleton to Boston. And then in the afternoon peak, we will see an increase of one, one run, where currently we have six trains that come out here, and there will be a seventh train. So we'll have, we'll see an increase. The schedule that has been released is available online. The T spokesman who came to my meeting last week said that he spent sixteen hours of his life putting together a station-by-station comparison to see what, for each and every station on all of the commuter rail lines, how the current schedule compares to the proposed schedule. This is just some comments that I added to the Littleton one, to see that, among the things we're seeing on the inbound, coming from, coming from Littleton into Boston, that the first inbound train would leave here at five-twenty-five AM, and that's eighteen minutes earlier than the current, the current time, the same number of inbound trains during the peak period. And then after seven forty-five, that there would be trains at seven fifty-five and eight thirty-five, which is earlier than what the current schedule is right now. So that it's, it's filling in a little, a little better service. We will see a net increase of one inbound trip during the afternoon off-peak, with six fifty-nine and eight oh-seven departures from Littleton to Boston. And then on the outbound, we will see our first reverse commuter of the day will arrive from Boston at seven forty AM. Well, that's seven minutes later than currently, seven thirty-three is what we have now. Seven minutes later, but it's still, it's still an early, early train. There is a net decrease of one outbound trip during the off-peak, but there's a net increase of one outbound trip during the peak period. So it's, it's a wash. Overall, I have to say that the schedule is, is, seems fine. I was particularly glad to see some of my counterparts from other communities, the town manager in Concord came to the briefing last week. And I think that the, generally, the other communities are going to find that this, that this schedule is acceptable. The T has set up a procedure for, for input. You can email your comments to the address shown here. They're accepting comments through February twelfth. And they've launched a series of public meetings. The one that's closest to us will be on Thursday, January twenty-eighth, in Concord, six-eight PM, and a number of us will be there. And we're, and we're working with the Fitchburg Line Working Group and the Crosstown Connect and the Magic Subregion to make sure we're all there to say that. It's important that, that for tho, if you like what's in the schedule, it's, that's just as important for the T to hear as for the folks who complain about it. So we're going to be out, we're going to be out there in force. And that's it. So if folks have questions about the schedule, if the information's available online for commuter rail passengers, there's also a, an online tool that the T has set up, where you can log on and give your specific comments about the, about your experience.
Well, I'll tell you, for one thing, having seen this thing grow and finally come to fruition, better than what we had, but not quite as good as what we wanted. It's, it's a benefit to the businesses in town, it's a benefit to our residents in town, not only in town, but all the local communities, to get the better experience with the T. Keith, I understand all your work, and we appreciate that. Members, any other comments?
Nope.
Thanks very much. It's, it's been great, you know what's been great? That if you just look back two years, two years ago, the first reverse commuter of the day arrived in Littleton at nine forty. A year later, eight thirty-seven, now it's seven thirty-three. And, you know, so we're doing about an hour per year. And that's, and the state government is, is really listening to us on this issue. So I think that when the time comes, because of the investment in the Fitchburg Line improvements, two-hundred-and-seventy-seven million dollars over time, to achieve this goal of being able to get from Fitchburg to Porter Square in one hour, that's what it's, that's, was the justification for all those hundreds of millions of federal dollars. Because of the, the state-of-the-art station that Littleton has, which is, which, because it's a single-center platform, is, is the best place for, for the equipment to turn around. And that, I think, and they understand that we need more parking. That's on our radar screen with our community compact, so I think we can continue. We've made great progress now, but I think we're poised to be able to make even better progress in the, in the future.
Nice.
Mr. Vella, any questions?
Sure.
All right, thank you, Keith. Moving on to seven C, the MAPC Council, the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. You know, I got a call early tonight before the meeting in, Mr. Knox, I thought you wanted to be representative. You didn't send that email? This is a reappointment, this is a reappointment of the town administrator as Littleton's representative to MAPC. MAPC is a organization that's helped this town out a lot. And is, with Keith's leadership, you're in the leadership role.
Yep, Vice President.
Is really done us, done us right. So from the entire board, thank you for doing that, Keith, and we appreciate that. Especially where Mr. Knox doesn't have the time to do it and.
They get, they get hard, they get tired of me talking about Littleton, and I'm never tired of talking about it.
Perfect.
I didn't see that.
Members, any questions? I'd look for a motion.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to Mass General法 chapter forty B, subsection twenty-four, to reappoint Town Administrator Keith Ergman to a three-year term as the Town of Littleton's representative on the Metropolitan Area Planning Council effective January twenty-fifth, two thousand sixteen.
The move is second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks again.
Thank you, thanks very much. And that's not a misprint, that chapter forty B is the same chapter that, which we all love so much. Affordable housing is also the chapter that established the regional housing agency, the regional planning agencies.
All right, there, Mr. Vella, minutes?
I may, before we go into that, absolutely, one other item.
Yes.
This Thursday evening, at the Planning Board, the Master Plan Updates Steering Committee will outbrief the Planning Board with a recommendation as to who we are recommending for the vendor to service us and help us with our master plan.
Outstanding. Congratulations on that.
And Planning Meeting starts at seven, and we're on the agenda, I think it's seven fifty, I just don't remember exactly yet, but certainly, everybody's invited. Unless there's a member of the steering committee, invited twice. She'll go twice.
Thank you.
Okay. Let me get my date here. That I would that we vote to approve our minutes from, Keith, let me on the date.
December fourteenth.
December fourteenth, two thousand fifteen.
Move the second, and all those in favor to approve the minutes from our meeting on Monday, December fourteenth?
Aye. Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. We are going into executive order, executive session for two items, and we will read each motion separately, the first one being for Land Value Cooper Farm Property, Mass General法 chapter thirty-eight, subsection twenty-one, A six. Look for a motion.
Move that we go into executive session?
Yeah, you want to read this one?
Oh, right, got that. Okay, move that the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to Mass General法 chapter thirty A, subsection twenty-one, A clause six, to go into executive session to consider the value of rail properties, since an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the Board's negotiating position relative to the Cooper Farm property, and not to convene an open session thereafter.
Move the second, there's a roll call vote, Sloss and Hebert.
Aye.
Mr. Carr, all right, Mr. Knox, Mr. Vella. All right, so we have another executive session for the deployment of security personnel planning for potential protest.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to Mass General法 chapter thirty A, subsection twenty-one, A four, to convene in an executive session to discuss the deployment of security personnel, devices, and strategies, and not to convene an open session thereafter.
Again, another roll call vote.